All right, spring this vinyl haven town of violated select board meeting for May tenth two thousand twenty-two five p.m. to order roll call. I have Jake Thompson, Leslie Dyer, Eric Gasparini, myself, Pam Alley, Andy Doortown manager and this bunker deputy town clerk. Uh, the agenda where we have. Two additions, one.
I think three.
Three.
I was asking about planning commission and housing committee updates.
Okay.
That's in committee and department reports. Um, and I've a letter from the DOT commissioner that came out yesterday under communications.
What does that you say? Letter from Hill?
The DOT commission.
That was in, what was the other update? You said housing and.
Planning commission and the housing committee had updates to provide.
All those are two separate things, not one.
Well, we're gonna combine them into one, just to get seven.
And planning, okay.
And five C.
Five C letter from DOT. All right, um, we approve the agenda is amended, all those in favor. Number three, approve the minutes from the April twenty-sixth two thousand twenty-two and May third two thousand twenty-two select board meetings. So moved on both fronts, all those in favor. All right, a proven sign treasured warrant number forty-five, second, all those in favor. All right. By a communications lobsterman day. Is this one of the sustainable main fishing foundations that?
No, this is different. This is from Jane, right?
On the skippers. Yeah, I had a note saying that Kate and Warren and stopped by and we were talking about trying to bring back the lobsterman's day. They've been at the fish plant parking lot, but that was all they had on the date they were looking for, but.
What was the date they were looking for?
Uh, I said June fifth.
As I say, it was Sunday. Those days and the skippers. Talking about it lines, I thought I just know very minimally about, they were just talking about trying to bring it back and I said, I said, I'm sure you could have it in the fish plant parking lot, parking lot like they used to, there's usually not much going on there on a Sunday in June.
First Sunday in June.
Or any Sunday in June, I don't think there's a lot going on down there, so. Um, I think that's why they were talking about the fish plant park, that's why they used to do it.
Right.
But they're not requesting anything officially at the moment, it's just.
Well, no.
Use of the property. Use of.
Well, I don't, I don't, they didn't actually bring it to us yet, but that's what James was talking about to me, like at the line or to the lines.
Okay.
So we'll see, I mean. I don't think it'll be a big ass, whatever they ask as far as we'll just be if they can hold some kind of a community event in love.
Well, we'd have one more meeting before that that date anyway.
Right, yeah, if they choose that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Move on now, sustainable main fishing foundation, local two oh seven.
A press that came in the other day. Jake can probably talk a little bit more about it.
Basically like the. MLA thing.
Why is it all for the legal, legal fund?
I mean, I.
I was donating to it. I don't know where we have available in the budget for. Sure they want it sooner than later.
Yeah.
I don't know, what does the board think?
I'm a favorite of the money, yeah, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what, what line we even have available money in right now. I mean, all our donations obviously are earmarked for.
We've already made that in our budget.
Yeah, we, we just pass it, you know, the letters.
Can we have amount in the new budget?
For.
For the MLA.
Yeah, yeah, this is a different ass.
Right.
A thousand dollars.
Yeah. Is there anything? In the budget now that we, any place we could take it from?
In the current, when you have your selectmen's contingent, see which I think was five hundred, I don't know that you'd spend to me that yet this year. I don't think we have, I can't think of anything we spent on it. Looking, bring it back for the next move. Well, how about I, I make a motion that we send five hundred dollars to. May two oh seven for five hundred dollars from the selectmen surplus, whatever that fund is, assuming it exists still. How about that? And if it doesn't exist, then it doesn't exist.
Okay.
There's that emotion, I can't be made like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, it's just. You can say the balance of, you know, the balance of the.
Yeah, if it's not five hundred dollars, it's one hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay, yeah, I will amend my motion to the current balance of the selection contingent.
With the balances. Thirty-five thousand dollars.
All we know.
Either five hundred dollars or less.
Up to five hundred dollars. Then we are gonna give.
Up to five hundred dollars. How many more meetings do I have?
We're gonna have one a day until you're done. Um, I second that motion, all those in favor. All right. Letter from the DOT, and this is about main state ferry service disruptions.
That's correct, yeah, there was a note that went out yesterday from the commissioner. Um, acknowledging something that they've talked about before, and the staffing challenges and keeping. The trips. Crewed and available without interruption, they thought there was gonna be, the Thompson was gonna make today and tomorrow the. Thompson's middle trip wouldn't run the vinyl haven, run the north haven instead, but they were able to last night and this morning, I guess, find a way to.
Make that work.
Make it work so that Thompson didn't come off service here, so with that note that came out yesterday, this letter also accompanied that schedule change and. It, the challenge still exists, citing staffing concerns and COVID primarily as a contributing factor. You know, within highlighting the same challenge being faced by others in the ferry industry across the country. There's more to just give you a note, notice that, you know, where I read that is, you know, it's kind of like. They don't fill the staffing positions or find ways to. Keep those staffed or fill the vacancies.
There's gonna be more.
Probably expect more of the same uncertainty throughout the summer. I don't know if there's anything the board wanted to, I mentioned the film, you mentioned making some phone calls and just checking in on things, I don't know, I talked to Rick on North Haven and Janet and Milesboro. Um, what is it that we should be doing as boards or administrators or towns to contact who to put it at the top of someone's radar? You know, they talk about the wages, you know, as part of this, and I know that the DOT has been trying to talk to their HR folks above them, state and. Can we do pay skip pay adjustments? And that's been challenging. You know, how they structure contracts versus employees, employees and positions, there's differences in that, you know, things they might be able to do or not do, but they're still. Little uncertain, I guess, is the big thing, and I don't know, I got the impression it wasn't top of the list, perhaps, the folks they talked to, and I don't know if there's things that we should be doing.
How many, do you know how many? Positions are not filled?
I don't know that.
I wasn't sure if they could, didn't say that in the what.
There, there's a, there are all kinds of obstacles to progress, there, one of them is the way that legislature apparently. Apportions the. Positions rather than saying that we're gonna give DOT under thousand dollars to operate their first service, we're gonna, we're gonna say you can have four captains, you can have. Six able bodies, you can have several qualified deckhands, you can have so many. Fill-in workers and you can have so many. Itinerant workers, so that's all prescribed by the legislature. Which really handicaps the management of the ferry service when they're trying to fill in a few positions if, you know, somebody gets sick here and somebody gets sick on Alabot and somebody picks a day up. In North Haven and they can't take advantage of, for example, itinerant workers are people who. Perhaps work elsewhere in the country for nine months out of the year, and then they have three months off and they come here where they live and they want to fill in. They can't fill in if they are exceeding the number of itinerant workers on the payroll. It seems ridiculous and I'm waiting for a report from Dave Merman to see if I can understand it better. But that's not the only obstacle to progress, I think another obstacle to progress is I don't think really DOT. I hate to be just in their face because they can't accomplish it in that way, but the fact is, is pretty clear, they don't want to operate the ferry service. The DOT doesn't want to be involved with the ferry service. And pretty much everything that I sense coming out of management, the DOT is disingenuous and. I think they just view the ferry service as a troublesome nuisance. So it's difficult to get. To move forward, you know, we're. Trying to find a solution to this problem in particular, that is crucial, he's a jury volunteered to be. An itinerant worker or a fill-in worker. And his offer was rejected. And it was rejected, I think, because of their small-minded management is still upset about him having prevailed. In his lawsuit after he's. And stupidly demoted for having gone to his elected representative to call his elected representative's attention. To the fact that the two thousand and eight safety assessment had never been paid the attention to and. Rather than it being a constructive move, it simply pissed off the. Management and they demoted it, it was stupid thing to do because. He was determined and he prevailed and as a result, we, the taxpayers, are out at least a million dollars. And. That just goes on and on.
Well, I mean, when we're looking at the thing that Andy showed us is spring about wages and Rockland, the DOT was the lowest one, it was like twelve dollars and eleven cents an hour or something. Yeah, Donald's paying fifteen dollars an hour, how are they gonna get anyone to work there if they're gonna pay three dollars an hour less than McDonald's pays, so I mean, that's probably quite an issue right there.
That's more in the terminals than I would think.
I mean, that was for an ordinary person, because on the boat, like the Thompson or at the sphere ever goes, they have three decks, so they need to have an extra. Person on there, but they don't have to be an AB, they can just be anyone off the street.
Okay.
So I think that was that job, wasn't it? An ordinary seaman, I thought is what it said, so I mean.
That's still.
Someone getting paid twelve dollars and eleven cents to ride the ferry for twelve hours, I, you couldn't pay me that much.
I, I agree.
So, I mean, that's an issue. I mean, you can go to McDonald's and get two or three more dollars an hour and not have to be on a boat.
And they had a signing bonus, I think.
Yeah, probably, so, I mean, yeah.
And the Thompson going offline this summer because it was inadequately, they said inadequately insulated, in fact, it wasn't insulated at all. And the reason it wasn't is because the design people didn't call for insulation, which wasn't necessary. And we didn't have a clerk of the works on the, the OD didn't have a clerk of the works on the project, so no one called anyone's attention to the fact that it wasn't insulated. And just another example was of, of me, look at the spear that then almost, it's been over a year now that has been promised next week.
The new old boat.
Yeah, the new old boat, yeah.
You had a, we needed another haul out, putting some zincs on it before it even run the trip.
Right.
Somebody goes on a, put it out, probably.
And you may recall when the Thompson came online, everybody could ride the Thompson except handicap people. Because the elevator didn't work, the spear, the elevator doesn't work. Badly managed.
Yep, total agreement there, Phil.
Well, I, I don't know what more.
Board, maybe when you find out what they has for recommendations, maybe you could. For that email to us, whatever you find out, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, once you hear, once we hear from a representative, then we can follow up as, as.
I can't believe in the government too, because I wrote, uh, because. It seems a simple matter to overcome, if we can't run the ferry service because we don't have. Adequate staffing and the reason we don't have adequate staffing is because we're not offering the right benefits or paying enough money, then in order to serve the people of these islands. We need to step in, administration, step in and offer whatever incentives are necessary to get the people to step up.
Right.
So I, I can't, it seems to me the solution is obvious. And they ought to find it. Instead of saying. It looks empty for this summer, we're trying very hard.
So Thompson goes off, if the Curtis and the Philbrook and one of those breaks down, I mean, the Libby, is that correct?
Until it goes to Matina, it has two or three days a week, then we got one.
I mean, talk about, it's gonna be a nightmare over there in mainland this summer.
Just don't plan to go away.
Just don't.
Go away.
I never planned to go away in the summer.
I have to go away a couple of times.
Well, between that and then try to park.
What is the update on the spear?
Park and lock.
This next week, like you said, they just keep saying next week, next week.
The spear's elevator has been presumably repaired, it's gonna be inspected on Friday. And then they're looking for a coast guard COI, that's to forget inspection by the end of the month.
So they can't do that until the elevator works, they couldn't do the rest of the boat?
No, they can't do the inspection until everything.
Is operational.
Has been operational, we are bound to be operational by. Management.
Sounds like a government operation.
So when management finally says to the coast guard, okay, we've done everything, come look at it, they'll come, but if you haven't, can't say we've done everything, put the elevator in.
That's the obvious solution.
Hi, Eric, you're getting done in June, there were plenty of time.
All right.
You done, oh.
Yep. Okay. Six speakers from the floor. Anyone here? Go ahead.
Well, I've got a couple of mine, it's really nothing like the ferry boat. In the ordinance, roadside on hot warfers for automobiles that have stickers. And previously I had two trailers there, put ads in the wind and show you all season, trying to find a few more of them so I can get notified, you know. Meanwhile, the two more showed up, I got ahold of one, if a long story short. The dump's full, we don't have an impound area. And I need some guidance.
Seems like we have this issue every year.
I know.
It doesn't go away.
If we had.
What about coops? Can we put stuff down there? I mean, are they still storing much stuff down there?
How about? Um, hi, Miss Millie. Um, I was thinking, pick the excavator up to the dump and try to stack some vehicles to make more room until we can get them out of here. I just have to coordinate that with Kenny.
Okay. Well, once that's done, then we can move them up there potentially.
Yeah.
Move them where?
To the dump.
She's gonna move some cars around with an excavator up there to make some room.
I need. And then, now that's, that's part of it, the other part of it's a personal issue, when I go taking, last winter, New Year's. New Year's Eve, somebody cut six of my tires, they cut my tires, obviously, because I give someone a ticket or. Someons or, like, somebody didn't like the harbor deal or some kind of thing, so when I go, when I go do these things, they don't retaliate on you, they come back on me and cut my tires. I just follow the ordinance. So we put the ads in the wind, we notify people that you've always got, like, in every community, you got a percentage that are just challenging. And I lose. So. I hesitate to really want to take, I understand that's what I have to do. But I'm saying I hesitate doing that to people, these, these kamikaze people, and you take their nice beautiful trail and you take it up to the dump, where they gonna get pissed at? They're gonna get pissed at me, they're gonna, you know, so I'm just saying. I kind of wish we'd have an impound area that was secure, not just for that reason. Because when you take somebody to the dump, anybody can go up there and grab that trail, and say, I own that trail, that beautiful trail, but because I. Two wrongs don't equal a right, and the way I'm looking at it, it's wrong for me to take somebody, even though they're screwed up. It's wrong for me to do that because it's wrong because I'm the one that's gonna get retaliated out of it, okay, it's wrong for me, okay? If we have an impound area, there's cost taken, the town has to pay, has to pay for the fuel, the time, for the people to lug these things up there. And then somebody goes and takes them, so we have to, we have to eat that, if we had, if we, if we had an impound area that was secure, we could say, sure, you wanna leave your stuff around like that? Well, it's gonna cost you, it's gonna cost you money to get it back, but at least your equipment is secure, somebody can't take it, that's my recommendation, the other issue I have. Is in the, uh. In the ordinance of people who get stickers for their skips. And we had an issue come up with a man from Ring's Island, I can't remember his name, he lives in my aunt Ruth's house there, married, married to a lady that lived there, and I can't remember the name. But anyway, he's a resident. He wanted two stickers and he came to the office and we wasn't sure, Debbie said, well, we're not really sure if he can have two stickers, and I'm not sure either. These are just for their benefit, there's no fee, is there a limit, like, one sticker per person, can I give as many stickers, they'll first come, first served to people that need them?
That's all we took away any limits on stickers, so.
I just had, we just, I just have to know.
Didn't we?
I don't remember putting a limit on it.
Because we had a limit of so many on each warp and we just.
That's the thing, there's a limit to how many you can park there.
Right.
We decided just to say, okay, give the stickers out, go whatever you want to go, that's, that would make sense.
That was your recommendation, right?
And then it's, yeah, to me anyway.
I don't think this one, they could get two from the.
God wants to have a skip up here because of one reason, but he wants to keep another skip down here.
Yeah, I don't recall that we put a limit on the number permits.
I'm sure that some other people have more than one boat died up in place.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that because Debbie had an issue and I said, okay, just, just.
Yeah, I don't believe.
We started with the women initially, because if we're giving out permits, we certainly understand and hear from a lot of people about the ferry service parking lot in Rockland.
Yeah, but we're not charging for these ones.
They're not, no, you're not, but people are getting a permit and their expectation is that they've got the permit, they're expecting to be able to tie up, that's what we were hearing in the past. So we suggested we limit it, and then Jim was running into the challenge of, that's, you know, can we, do we, do we need to, and so we at the time suggested that we just. Let it be first come, first served, our biggest challenge was wanting to make sure we could identify whose boat it is, if it was getting water or sinking or.
Right.
Whatever, and still let it be come first, and just know that there's just not enough tie-up for everyone that wants to use it, and it'll be first come, first served.
Well, if we get the two new floats this year, that should alleviate some of the problem with not being enough room, correct? There should.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
But.
Yes, that's, that's an ongoing project, I don't know if it's gonna be this year, I, I don't know when it's gonna be, we're, we're working on it and it's a working project.
Right, but to your question about the permits, yeah, I don't believe we put a limit on that per household, so.
I don't, I just wanted to clarify.
Yep. I mean, I.
We can inform that guy, yeah, you can have.
There should be some, you know, common sense put to it as well, though, like, someone asked for a hundred permits for that tie-up float, like. No, there's not gonna be a hundred boats tied up there anymore, but if someone wants two for per household, I don't see that being a problem, so.
And, and last of all, we, if I want to go back to the first issue. It costs money for the town, I hate taking people's things to the dump, they're nice, beautiful trailers, even though they're screwed up, I don't think we should be too. I don't, I don't like the fact of taking somebody's trailer up there and leaving it there for anybody to grab, even though they're wrong, I think we need to be bigger than that. At some level. And the only alternative is, from my point of view, is I think we, we need a place that's secure for whatever they, for whatever. So the town has to deal with their issues, they want it back, they should have to be accountable for it, and it's safe, and that's my, not, the, the money is one thing, I don't care if the town eats it at all.
Could we?
Right for, for the. Somebody's nice trailer because they're screwed up, they go up to the dump, and somebody come on and take it, and it's automatically theirs, just like that.
Well, there should be, you'd have to prove that it's yours, how are they gonna prove, I mean.
No, they don't have one.
No, I'm just saying, how do, how does the person that owns it, I mean, how do they, they have to prove that they own the trailer before they can just tow it off, I would think.
No.
If something's taken to the dump, you can just go.
Well, salvage or something, but.
Now, the ones with license plates on them, they can track down.
Right.
The rest of my ability, the ones without license plates. All the ads in the wind, I'm sure, if anybody knows who owns these.
So I'll have to build a fence.
Notify them, so.
Fence done.
So they can come get their thing. And meanwhile, they set their.
Or.
Shouldn't that be an issue for?
Yeah.
Here, if they're not right, no plates and.
Yeah, should be, shouldn't it?
They're on the road, sure.
Could we?
Yes, sorry, Millie, go ahead.
Could we put them behind that factory, behind the old garage, and rather than put a whole fence in there, you can just buy. Um, the locks that go over the, the tongue so that they can't be hooked up.
Yeah, that's probably the quickest and easiest solution at this point, isn't it?
Like a great idea.
Yep.
Well, yeah.
Isn't there a gate there?
One side.
That you can get through the other side, though.
Uh, one, only one side.
Yeah, just put, put a little lock over the tongue.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe we can look.
Buy, buy those sometime, definitely.
You can, I mean, they're probably.
Then they just take a bolt.
Well, I mean, they're that determined, they'll do it.
At least it's not going.
Right, then it's secure, they can get it back, and then we can also find out whose it is and be like, hey, we had to store this.
How hard would it be to take a Sharpie and write your name on a frigging trailer if you don't have a registration on it?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's supposed to be registered, correct?
Yes, they are, yes.
No, yeah, they're on the road, yeah.
It's a two-year, two-year registration.
Yeah, it depends on how many pounds they are, and they're like a really heavy trailer, then they're one year, but they're. I can't remember what it was, whenever I read, first registered one, they said, how, how many pounds can it hold? And I said. I said, well, what does it matter?
I can get on.
That's basically what I said, and she said, well, if it doesn't hold this many pounds, you can do it every two years, and I said, yeah, that's what it holds.
If the pound, the pound has to eat that fuel, they have to, the manpower, so they have to do that. And the people are gonna keep right on doing this until they have. Well, gee, it's gonna cost me fifty bucks to do it, you know, whatever, kind of, you know. Nothing's gonna change unless something changes here.
Right. All right.
And, and also, I'm sorry, but still got poor trailer they have to deal with, and I'd like to know what happened.
Can we order? Some of those padlocks like Millie suggested and presumably, we'll all look into it.
I, I can look tomorrow if you.
Paddle locks, there's like a paddle lock that goes over the, so that you can't put them on the tongue of your trailer, like, after you move them over behind that factory hill, you just put a paddle lock on there. Yeah, something like that, that they couldn't do, yeah, that's what we'll look into getting some paddocks, then we'll just.
Millie, you said you could.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I can put tomorrow's boss behind it and I'll let you guys know, and then we can order them up.
Okay, Millie's gonna look into it for us, get some paddocks, and then just settle the down, then they won't just be able to go and grab them, well, I mean, they have a bolt cover, yes, but.
Still. Still.
Better option. They can, still.
Yeah, that's what, best we can do in the short term.
So we'll have to, we'll have to put cameras down there, actually do it.
Or find a new spot for them.
Right, for now, that'll work, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers from the floor? Okay, move on to seven. Millie. Seven A, Director of Public Works Report. Millie, you're up.
All right. Excuse me, um. So, I'm really, really busy, really busy. Um, we've had, you know, some people out here and there, which has kind of made, uh, made it a little difficult to get a lot done. We lost the tire on the grader, um, that got cut by a rock grading the last time, but we've got that back on the road, so today we were able to take care of Caldwell's neck and the. Out to Sharon's and then down to George Gross's there, um, so that's all done, I think we're gonna need to. I think we're gonna need to, uh, skip right on to, um, get some calcium chloride on the end because it's very dusty. And we've also got plans to, um, get the, um, gallamander uncovered. Um, probably that might not happen till first of next week, but I'll try to get to it this week. Um, as well as, um. Um, getting this, uh, Main Street ready for the street sweepers that come next, I think it's next week, the twenty, twentieth, twenty-first, I believe. Um, so, a lot of moving parts going, um, a lot to do. I will say I timed us the other day putting a culvert in with the excavator. And it was about an hour and a half to, from start to finish, which is about an hour quicker than it is with the backhoe, so. Um, that was, that was nice, it was, you know, it's just got good control, um, easy to slope with and so on, so. Um, I was, I was very happy with that time. We're sending the rental truck back, uh, first of the week. We'll be done with that. And then I'm just gonna try to, once we get, uh, Main Street taken care of, I'm just gonna try to focus on getting as much done with the excavator as we can while we have it. Um, and then move on from there.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Millie. Appreciate the hard work. Thank you, the crew. Alright, seven B, Downtown Project Update. Rent's coming.
Friday and, Friday and Monday.
Did they have any issues when they did all the drilling and different things? I mean, I see the.
I don't think they had.
I mean, I assume if there was any big issues, they would. That's what I was like, they've already dug it out two or three times to put a pipe through there, put sewer and a pipe through there for water, so. Just checking.
The only issue they're gonna run into potentially is, you know, you get down under the surface of the road and the rocks are a little bigger than you anticipated and you. You see, you know, you're moving more than just the trench, but. I think they're gonna try and lay it right next to the existing one, so it should be a pretty good trench already.
Problem like I have to do the storm drain and stuff too.
That one will be a little more.
It'll be nice to have that fixed.
Maybe fixed isn't the right word, but yes, done correctly.
Any questions on that?
When do we? I think we'll start putting stuff out to bid.
Uh, so they know they needed, one of the things we're waiting on is the property owners in which we'll need to get easements from. Temporary easements from, um, the attorneys need that list so they could start their process, they're aware of it. They've done as much as they can without the list is my understanding at this point, so that's supposed to be going out to them if it hasn't already. Get going on that. So once, once all those easements come, I think they have to be completed before we can submit. The project, the, the bid specs and like the whole thing, the EVA to move forward, they need to see that they have that authorization, property owner approval. Pretty darn similar to what we had gone through with the sewer project and not that long ago, so.
Okay.
They don't expect there to be any issues, but. Well, that, their expectation is that by, I think the end of June, I think it is, they expect to be able to have approval from the EVA. And to move forward.
They said a couple of months.
And then it would be sometime in middle or in July or early August if they get their bid back and awarded in August. All things work out.
Okay. And what are the last two grants? We have the ship grant.
Yeah, the ship grant, we're waiting for, um, a site visit to be scheduled by the state, we've sent in the letter of interest. So they needed to do a site visit on, out here and look at what we're looking to do. Once they, once they do that, we can, we're welcome, presumably we'll be welcome to submit a grant request.
What is NEPA?
Natural Environmental Protecting Act, Protection Act.
I know, it drives me crazy when you look.
And you want some of these things to. Alright, any other questions on the update? Seeing none, move on to seven. C. Engineer report. Well, no, we didn't.
We have ABA.
We have ABA. The engineer report is C. New advanced and development design plans, so. We're still, we're still waiting.
We'll have them hostage on Friday and Monday, so.
Yeah.
Give you a chance there, Donald.
Every, everybody who goes and sees them, you have to ask them about this dump, the transfer station plants, where are those plants? We're supposed to be under construction now.
Yeah.
I asked you weeks ago.
And I, I add one more thing I forgot to tell you guys.
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, um, I also wanted to let you folks know that, um, I'm switching us to, um, four ten-hour days right now.
Okay.
It just, it seems to work better summertime, we have more daylight and we're able to get a lot more done in that ten hours versus eight. Um, so we're gonna try that for a couple of weeks and see how it goes.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea, Millie.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Makes sense, like you said, there's more daylight. Then the crew gets three days off.
Yeah.
I would too, yeah. Alright, any of the questions in the engineer report? Alright, move on to seven D, Knox County Sheriff. This is April report or the actual, the Q one report?
So far, year to date, January through April, um, the calls for service.
We still get daily reports.
We do, because I don't ever see them, so.
They go into that.
Other, they go. Focus box and another box. You can right, right click and move.
If you wanna check them, like, I mean, I don't check them every day, but if you go, they are there, mine don't come in the focus box, they go into that.
Alright, so I've gotta check the other, alright, that's my problem.
Like my, like the stuff from the MMA and stuff from that, I'll go. Yeah, I don't know about you, but that's where mine all goes.
I just take what's in that and put it in a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Every morning and it's obviously one or two calls maybe.
There was a hit.
There's plenty of calls where there's none, no days where there's no calls for service, um, that's just what it is so far year to date, hundred and eight. Calls for service.
So what do we, when, uh, Tim was out here a couple of years ago, we said we averaged over a thousand a year, right?
I'm pretty sure, pretty close to it, it wasn't, about a hundred a month.
Yeah, so I mean, so we, so we're only averaging twenty-five, not even one a day for the first four months, so. It must go up to what, five calls a day in the summer, I think.
Um, not necessarily, um.
Or just, just not reflecting everything that gets called in.
Well, yeah, and I know before.
Oh, again?
Again?
Are you guys doing gossiping over there?
No, I'm sorry. No, I don't know.
Asking questions.
Yeah.
I wanna know what hit and run ten fifty-five is, good buddy.
I think ten fifty-five is the code for him, run, that's my guess. I'm surprised. Drug take back. What is that? Prescription medication taken back, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, a container down at the, um, I don't think it's ready to be used yet, but they put in, they installed a box down at the fire station, so. As long as the fire station's open, you'd be able to just return, um, prescription pills that.
Were unused.
Updated, unused. You don't want them in the house, they don't recommend putting them on the toilet, they said just. Them in the.
They'll bring them to the medical center too.
This is a hundred eight incidents in four months' time, maybe we don't need full contact at the end, you know?
Well, we're not into the busy season yet.
Yeah.
Well, it's important how you measure their productivity, I mean, some people would say. If there's less calls for service, then something is being done, that the presence of someone stopping someone from doing something they would have otherwise done. Um, just to use the calls for service, if you have high number of calls for service, then it suggests you got a big problem and some would say, maybe there's not enough people. I think, as I was starting to say earlier, that past deputies, um, the board and the town were upset with the reports because there were. A lot of property checks that were being done and they didn't put high value in, in that at the time, and so I know that. For some people, was perceived to have inflated the number of calls for service, but, um, it did at least show that they were out and about. Well, it was a different way, and so I think if you wanna talk about, you know, how do you wanna measure productivity or the effectiveness of it, you know, looking at this number alone is, is tough. Other things next to it to understand how it's going.
It is difficult to measure what.
They don't.
What, what is, what is success from the point of view of the town, like, since. The incident a couple of years ago, well, luckily no one's been murdered since then, so that would be a success, right? Is that on Knox County or is that just, we're grateful now that. Those people aren't here murdering people, I mean.
I would, I would suggest like year over year, one thing that could be done is like a satisfaction survey of the.
Right, yes.
And that's one way to measure, like, how people perceive their effectiveness and their quality of work.
Does Knox County do that?
I'm not trying to make light of what happened a couple of years ago. I mean, they may periodically, but I'm not familiar with the regular one.
I was just curious if they ever saw like, I mean, they have.
No, we.
Twenty towns.
Well, I'm trying to make it clear, cause.
I know.
Just kind of here. Obviously, what happened a few years ago was very serious and it's not something to laugh about or joke about, which I am not. I'm just trying to make the point that it is difficult to determine what is considered successful policing in this town. And I don't think we have an answer for that quite yet. So if we could hear back from the community on what they feel is being done well and what isn't being done well, then we can tell Knox County, hey.
Usually when things aren't going well, we hear about it.
That's true, that's true.
So it's kind of news is good news, maybe?
Yeah, no news is good news.
I don't know if the speeding has gotten better, cause I haven't heard as many complaints about that, but it still seems to be a problem.
Still got East Main.
Right.
Bad, bad, yeah.
It's too bad because.
But it's even when he's here, they know where he is and then.
Right.
Right, you know, yeah, when his only location is either.
Kids and dogs and cats, you know, it's just.
That's the other thing we all have to keep in mind too, even if there is someone here, they can't be everywhere at once, it's only one person, they can't be. At all places at all times, they're not gonna catch everything, so. Even if we had two full-time deputies and had seven days of coverage, it's still just one person policing the entire. The contract, is that, was, that was signed, correct? That's in effect, okay. And there's no updates on them getting another deputy, right? There's nothing, nothing.
The one I need to make sure that they're aware of, that the proposed budget doesn't include the funding for a second full-time deputy.
Yes.
It doesn't include the additional hours in the summertime, acknowledging that there's a lot more.
If they could find one, we could find the money for. Yes, let them know that we anticipate, if they find one, we will go back to the town and ask for it and we expect it to be approved because that's what the town said they wanted two years ago. There's no sense to keep carrying the money in the budget.
Right, exactly.
Alright, we'll move on to seven E, interim manager appointments, treasurer, tax, tax collector, GA administrator.
I'm just letting you know because the appointment is that I'm appointed to.
I know, I just said it now.
It's right on the back of the.
Right, and I just said, oh, there it is. Alright, I got it. Sorry.
I know, I just took the bottom one, that one's easier perhaps, um, as of July first, I would have recommended that. Millie, as the Director of Public Works, become the road commissioner, she wasn't at that time appointed to that position. Or had that appointment, um, didn't actually mention it to her before the meeting, but, um, for today, but as of July first, that would have been the recommendation anyways. I don't know if you're wanting to make that. Or to appoint the interim under summer, all of those, um, in which I'm currently serving.
I mean, I, if Millie's willing to take on that role, I'd, she, is she still on?
I was certainly in the job, just kind of the expectation, just early on, right to start, it was.
Yeah.
I just continued to do.
Millie, are you on board with that change?
Yeah, that makes sense, actually.
Alright, great. Make a motion, we, go ahead, point, when should the start date be?
It'd be, you know, as of, um, today if you wanted it, or, um, May sixteenth. I mean, it would be until, um, you'd have to do it again anyways, for July first.
Alright.
Um, so you could test it out.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Millie, the acting road commissioner, starting May eleventh until June thirtieth, that's tomorrow. I mean, day's over, I don't know.
That makes sense.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Go ahead.
Hold on a second. I just wanna know, so what happens to the director, does that, the public works director, is that, are they both the same thing, more or less?
That was, you know, kinda what the, like, kinda proposed and envisioned the job description, it was just right out of the gate where, you know. She was as much of a laborer as she was an admin, just with the staffing the way it is.
Right.
Um, I didn't wanna try and put that, that responsibility to, where I was already doing it anyways. But it would be the same, and that, that just, legally, this is a, a position that needs to be appointed by the board. Um, in statute, and then the director's position in, in name is just something we've created, and so. It would, in my mind, would make sense that the director be the road commissioner, just.
Okay.
We didn't do it at the time.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I second Jake's motion. All those in favor? Alright. Okay, so who wants to be tax collector, treasurer and general assistance administrator?
Those were, yeah, presumably, um, the things that we were gonna propose. Put towards the interim position, I didn't know if it was something that we could just have deputies for in the interim, or if you had to actually. Have it, but, you know, talking with Darlene and, you know, I don't know how Marge feels about that, but just the point is that, as the, during the interim.
It's appropriate.
Yeah, and during the interim, to appoint interim managers, Marjorie is the tax collector treasurer. GA admin and apparently the excise tax collector.
Someone to that side of the sixteen. I make a motion that we appoint Marjorie. To the treasurer, tax collector, general, GA administrator, and did you say excise tax collector?
Yes.
From May sixteenth to June thirtieth, right, then we have to reappoint it.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah. I second that motion.
Whoops, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Well, it's a little bit, are you the one that, um. Signs the reports, the motor vehicle reports?
No.
So we should make that be the.
When the plates come in, are they to you or to Darlene?
Don't know, they just come in and work them up.
I think they're for Darlene.
Well, the excise tax collector, um, if that changes, somebody has to come for motor vehicles. You're aware of that, right?
I don't know if anyone actually came out here last time, because we went through the change before, I don't remember anyone coming out.
Okay, well, I'm finally doing it.
If it makes more sense that, um.
As a, for instance, Barbara was always the excise tax collector.
Right.
When she left, I don't know what happened.
That must have ended me at that point, but I don't remember anyone from the state coming out, but it makes sense to have. That must have ended me at that point, but I don't remember anyone from the state coming out. But it makes sense to have.
Whatever you decide to do.
Well, we can. We can do that for the next meeting, perhaps.
I meant my motion to exclude the excise tax.
All right, so the motion is to appoint Marjorie as the GA administrator and the treasurer, correct?
And the tax collector, the regular tax collector.
Oh, right, I missed that one, sorry.
From May sixteenth to June thirtieth.
All right, twenty-two. I second that motion. All those in favor? All right.
So we'll be all set with that excise tax. You can figure that out and re.
I'll talk with Darlene and that would, in my mind, I don't. Know, we had a lot of conversation about it. We changed it last time.
But if we have to make someone from the state come out here, it'd be just easier if we didn't have to change it if it's already.
Right.
I don't know if they're still coming. By COVID, they stopped going to towns to do those transition audits. Um, so I don't know where they, where the standard is with it now, but there is a process and paperwork. When you change that motor vehicle designation of excise.
Okay.
Okay, isn't that's because it's a state?
We'll figure that out.
Let's make sure it's on the next agenda, so we bring it back up.
All right, I mean, either way, Darlene's either the deputy or the one like it's in her name, so it'll just go to her when you.
Yeah, she generally signs the reports when she was gone for those couple of weeks. I did sign, but only those two times. Actually, Marjorie helped one of them. It was an all hands on deck.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll just figure that out. And I don't think it's a huge issue if Darlene's a deputy or the treasurer. We'll just leave it at whatever's easiest, I think.
Yeah.
Makes sense. The last time the state has to come out here, probably the better.
Yes.
I agree.
All right.
Besides, it's probably not going to be a fairy, so they.
They notice there's no fairy, maybe they'll do something about it. They'll still complain about it, right? And then, won't they complain about it and someone will hear it? All right, so we did seventy, uh, we already did seven F, correct, as part of. So G seven, super commissioner appointments.
Um, Abby Proctor, uh, noticed that Tanya had been serving as a commissioner, uh, previously and. I did. She was a note taker, um, and you know, that would be nice if she could do that. She said, oh, I want to be commissioner too. I said, okay.
Oh, perfect.
Let the, for the board know, so.
So what does that just entail doing the reports?
It's just being a commissioner, yeah, I just, Pam's a commissioner, um, but it's, you know, they're a kind of prior. A, a committee or a commission before the select board, and so they'll make recommendations to the board for certain changes or certain things the ordinance allow them to do. You know, but meet at least quarterly, sometimes more often.
Do they have to live in like the district or any more?
No, it's it, because it's a town-owned utility, anybody in town.
Okay.
One district is different.
Right, yeah.
Or live in a district.
If it's anyone in town, then she always go off, I didn't know about if it was.
Yeah, I think we looked at it before, because we have someone currently who's on there that doesn't reside in.
Right.
In the district, but.
But the good thing about it is she's here and she'll take notes because nobody wants to take notes. But, yeah, that's good, great, thank you.
So I make a motion to reappoint Abby Proctor to the sewer commission.
All those favor?
Plus she knows the work, she walked. That's great.
I reminded her for the deputy clerk's position, we wouldn't be asking her to climb into any.
Wow, that's impressive. You couldn't pay me to do that. Don't have not climbed it into one of us. You kidding me? All right, seven H planning board housing committee. Planning Board Housing Committee, excuse me. Commission, sorry.
Commission, Wes is the chairman, but he couldn't be here tonight. So I said I would bring you the, um, final version of our year-round. Rental housing, um, suggestion for, for under approval. Like meeting and hopefully about along with the other things that are going to be voted on. And this is for year-round housing and there's a requirement that there be a written commitment by the owner. The unit will be used for year-round housing and it must be provided to the town. And any other rental use will be enforced as a change of use by the CEO. So that. The intent here is that anyone who's creating special rental, year-round rental housing in the sewer and water area. Has to, can, has to be sure that that's what they're using it for, that they can't do short-term rentals. And so they have to sign something, give something to the town, so it's on record. So that's the plan and the, um, the idea is to do what, um, some of the legislature, um, has. Um, I don't know whether it's been mandated yet or not, but to allow accessory dwelling accessory units like. Barrages and sheds and things to be converted to housing as long as it meets, you know, year-round safety. Comfort, you know, proper housing. But at the meeting the other night, it came up that. It doesn't just have to be detached structures. It could be a barn attached to someone's house or a garage attached to someone's house. In a way, it seems like that's more convenient to convert to housing as long as it's on town water and sewer. There's not going to be any, you know, pollution issues. So we included that. So that was something we hadn't previously really. Ironed out, but that's what happened at the meeting the other night. So we wanted to get this to you so that you could have it with the other. Things that you're going to put out for public hearing and a town vote. Sorry, I didn't get this to you before the meeting.
How big exactly is nine hundred square feet? That boys it, four bedrooms and.
These, these numbers were in our current ordinance.
As the minimum size, there's. Be smaller than those.
Yeah, we didn't make that up.
Three fifty is, I guess that's the studio apartment, okay. But still, that's. Yeah, I mean, I hate to be someone that, you know, I'm not going to tell someone how big or too small a living space is. These numbers probably, when they did it, probably came from something the state recommended or they probably found them somewhere. I'm sure they didn't just pick them up.
No, no, I, I agree.
I think they're the state minimums.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just seems really.
But, you know, people are living in tents, they're living in cars, they're living on people's boats.
Yeah.
You know, so having a place that you can actually leave your stuff and be warm and comfortable, even if it's small.
No, I.
Is a lot better than what's.
I agree. The people living in tents are. Uh, as long as they're on private property, that's fine, but they cannot stay on.
No, there's no tenting on.
You cannot.
Town parks.
Yeah, that's, that's common knowledge and there used to be a sign in Rockland to that effect. So people knew that before they came out. Because you saw a lot of people with camping equipment, but someone has to be enforcing that. When Lain Morehouse lived out on Lain's Island, she was always going out and finding people tending.
Well, they still do, so.
Really? Is it you going out there?
Just suggesting that.
But this is just an attempt to create the ability for, for more year-round rental housing. It's, you know, as long as people are willing to create the housing, it's a relatively quick fix. A lot faster than building new, new houses.
Right.
Right.
The only thing is that this is only within the. Area served by town water and sewer, correct?
Yeah, because those, those two utilities are underserved as our understanding.
Okay.
And it wouldn't create any pollution problems if there, this is happening on small lots. Um, not beating setbacks and things like that. There is, you know, there is interest in, in allowing. Figuring out a way to do this out of town, but it's going to be more complicated because we have different zoning. And people have built a house with maybe a four-bedroom septic system, but if they want to turn the garage into a bedroom or two bedrooms.
Right.
Then they're probably going to have to increase the size of the septic system. So and then how far is it from the well and. Well, so those are all going to be other issues that are going to be more complicated and more expensive.
Yeah.
And we can certainly go down that road if at the public hearing, there's interest in that and there's no reason not to do it.
Right.
It's just the, uh, planning commission thought this was a good, simple way to start and see how it flies within the community.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, that's.
What the holdup is on anything is how big of a septic design you.
Yeah.
How much you put in, so.
Yep.
I don't, no problem, I don't think, with anything. Do we have to, should we run that by MMA lawyer or anything to make sure?
Probably wouldn't, or to clarify, is this a proposal to completely replace the existing standard?
This is an additional standard.
We have a year-round. Housing standard currently. So we, we just, we'll just need to see in short of the public, is this an addition? Additional standard, I mean, we need to see it kind of where in the ordinance it fits. Is it replacing something as in addition to something? Now, we need to just, we need to know, because there is a year-round standard already in there.
I didn't bring my ordinance to me, but I guess this might be an addition, uh, and to that section.
It's under section sixteen land use standards.
So I'm assuming there's a one. And I think definitely needs to go through legal review if there, if there's going to be a sub, a, a second year-round housing. Bullet, I guess, under there, because there's already a density bonus in the ordinance for year-round housing. So I just, I don't know that. I was perhaps in the assumption it was a complete replacement of what was in there.
I really can't tell you.
Okay. Important to probably know prior to the board and setting a public hearing if that question comes up.
Yeah, if we're going to make. We should probably run all this stuff by. Because if you vote on something, it turns out to not to be legal. Like we run into issues with the. Aircraft ordinance, people already complaining about that.
So this includes, um, like an unattached structure also, correct? So they would have to hook into sewer and water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or they could. Potentially hook into their, the main home, main house.
This, this requires town sewer and water.
But it, yeah, but they would be able to, like, if I had an outlying shed, I could just have it hooked into my house.
As long as it's on town water.
Right, okay.
It'd probably worth making sure the sewer ordinance doesn't specify something different, if it allows either or. That's the only other place that that lays out the expectations for connections.
Right.
I mean, there's not going to be in most places an additional stub on every property, there's usually one stub.
Right.
Pretty, so, but whether you connect it, you know, through the basement wall, the existing structure or why off.
And will that, will that change our, um, user fee?
It would for any property that adds additional dwelling units. If they're going to convert a space and make a second dwelling, just like with the. I guess I don't quite understand the attached part, if, if a building's attached to, I mean, if it's one, one structure. Um, if you had a barn or garage attached to an existing structure, it's one structure and. Anyone today that's a single-family house can come to the planning board and get a permit at a regular meeting. Um, or prior to a meeting and, and ask for it to be two families. That's allowed. Any place a one family is allowed, a two family is allowed, my understanding. It's been that way.
So I was just looking for the ordinance and it looks like they might have meant to add this to the end because there's a. A one, like an eye with a bullet, but there's no two eyes with a bullet, so I, I don't know, but I just.
Under section sixteen.
Yeah, if you go to the end, if you go to the end, there's section one that has. Oh, no, there is a section two at the very end, says year-round rental housing. So maybe this is meant to. Be like another part because they don't have served by town water sewers, or maybe it's meant to be like two. A or something, I don't know, but.
Just need some clarity.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it could be a new section at the end for the, the year out. There's a year-round housing section at the end that's like. Ten bullets or whatever, so there's, there's no, so probably this is supposed to be a, not two, I guess.
It's, and it's different then, but as I was, I think talking about LD two thousand and three. That passed in the legislature this year and in pass governor's desk, and so that law goes into effect, those changes go into effect, um, June. On July one, twenty twenty-three, every town has to adopt and incorporate the affordable housing, um, components that were passed.
So they must be going to send us a list or.
It's out there, I don't know. There'll be a lot of discussion on it. Um, I don't know if they're going to formally send you anything, but just the law changed and you're expected to know. We do know it. Uh, we just have to, every town now has to incorporate it into their ordinance is, um, which I assume is why there's such a delay. But that's affordability, which is affordable housing, which is different from the year-round housing piece in here. This year-round housing piece in our ordinance doesn't talk about, I think, most of the news part does, affordability.
I don't see anything in the board.
But the affordable parts are all coming to every town. And some of those things are similar, some, some are different. One thing that is similar is the, um, public water and sewer piece. I don't know, was there a discussion about, about incorporating the affordable housing pieces? In consciously keeping the year-round housing piece and having the affordable as a separate standard, expectation.
In this? No, this is just to create housing. Or force housing, any kind of housing, mother-in-law housing.
And that's the intention of the affordable housing changes legislature put forward. I just wasn't sure if we're going to continue.
We're hoping we're going to be building more housing. So we'll be having that opportunity for.
Right, regardless, the law has changed that we will have to incorporate. So I guess I'm just asking, is there? Was there a discussion yet at this point?
Not yet.
Okay, so it'll still stay at this point to separate. The affordability piece will be factored in at some point.
Yeah.
And the year-round is being proposed to add this to, you know, to the current standards.
Okay, so that's from the planning commission, um. And from the housing committee, I wrote two grants which you authorized, one to the main community foundation, one to the John T. Gorman, Gorman Foundation. For the, both for the same amount of money, seventy-two hundred dollars to cover the extra expenses of having home energy answers come out and do. Uh, energy audits and air sealing on people's homes that qualify for. And, um, main community foundations denied our request, but the same day I heard from the Gorman Foundation that they were funding our request. So it was very nice to like to the community foundation and say, well, sorry, we didn't get the grant, but we got it from the Gorman Foundation. So that will cover the extra expenses of having him come out. Lodging food, ferry tickets, things like that. And I talked to Keith McPherson, he's the fellow who came out in the past, whose car you had. And, um, you know, he needs a certain number per week to do to make it worth him coming out and he's thinking about coming out in September would be the earliest. So, so we're going to try to coordinate that and figure out how many people actually have signed up for heat. Uh, we know there were seventeen people who historically been on heat, but there are nineteen new applications. That Candy was giving to people to, to call and fill out, so there may be nineteen more. So we'll just, we're going to wait and see. And she's a great liaison, trying to figure this out because people who are involved with the food pantry. Are generally on heat and Candy works really well with them, which has been really helpful.
I'm assuming if everything is five, six thousand a gallon, that more people might want to look into, if seen if they qualify also.
Right.
Yeah, I'm putting something in the wind this week about this, so maybe, and they have the names of the housing committee members. So people can reach out to us too. So that's sort of a first step, you know, if there's an energy audit and they do air sealing, but the whole house needs insulation, that can be something to look into in the future.
Did the community development people tell you that why they've denied the?
No, my sister's a fundraising expert and she said you ought to ask them. So I wrote to them and they just said. That they couldn't fund it this time and, uh, you know, maybe try again some other time. There is also a, um, donor designated funds. At the main community foundation, but I have no idea how they. Reach out to the people who have designated funds, you know, as opposed to contact the people. Who have given them that money for grants. And then they have some say as to whether or not that grant is given, but you have no way of knowing whether they've actually done it. It's. It's a little bit disappointing. Yeah, you kind of want to know, you know. Be nice if they said we reached out to five people, you know, with funds that might, this might have been appropriate with, but none of them felt it was right for them, something. It's just, it's a sort of black hole.
We know they've done it in the past because the last two grants the town got from the main community foundation were donor advised.
Really? Well, that's good to know. So maybe you know if it's successful, but not if it's not.
I know if it's not, I think by them saying no. No, I don't mean that anyway, just that, you know, when we got awarded last time, it says, you know, we're awarding this from the donor advised fund. And I think that's part of the process is they know what, what, what might be available. Sometimes I think some of the donor advised stuff was specific. I got the impression it was specific to vinyl heaven.
Well, I think there are specific ones to vinyl, but some are people have set up. So that's why I'm curious, you know, not to leave them gotten some kind of feedback about that. I mean, maybe they're specific for certain things, maybe some are specific to education, so they never would have run it by them. I, I don't, I don't know, I just don't really know how it works, but I'm just glad that Gorman Foundation is going to fund it. Um, and um. The housing committee's been working hard, we met with Jason Byrd from Penquist. And talked to him, we told him that we didn't know how long it would take for the water district and the town to finish negotiating. So he's, he's concerned about the funding, there's the island specific funding is available now. And the main housing funding is available, but there's no, like, they just cut off the funding when they've gotten enough applications.
Yeah.
So um I talked to Pam about this briefly, we came up with one idea at the um last housing committee meeting. Though I don't know if this would fly, um, the idea that maybe the um. Water district would be willing to turn over their interest in the net factory. With a lease back so that they would know that they could use the site as long as they needed to, until they could move to a new site, and as long as the downtown project needed the site. But it would enable, if the, if the community votes to have housing there, I know, I know that's another thing that would have to happen. If the community voted for that, then it would enable Penquist to apply for um funding. Because without that, he can't.
Right.
But I know there are lots of questions, you know, we want to know more from them, I mean, they're willing to come out, make a presentation about what they've done. Show us pictures of what they've done, what they would be proposing, what it would look like, how their process works. But I just, we're just so worried that we're gonna lose the opportunity. And it has to be a site that has town water and sewer. And he needs at least an acre, and we have been searching through, you know, all the property records, trying to find. Some places where that would be possible, but.
Is that an acre down there?
Yeah, according to the town assessment, it's an acre. Probably just an acre.
I don't know.
So that's just something we're, we're hoping might be able to happen, or maybe some other creative way or some other thing, I I don't know.
Unless there's another. So acre property bill sale, the town could purchase, I don't. I don't know.
Yeah, that's also hope, that's also accessible for water and sewer.
Right.
Um, are you saying that the town might even consider purchasing land?
Well, we would have to get approval from the town, but that's, that's another option.
That is an interesting idea.
I don't. The way it might not exist, you know.
Right, yes.
But we're gonna keep looking.
You, oh. I thought you had something, sorry.
Well, I was gonna ask Pam, you know, has the water board? Talked about.
Oh, it's just been in discussion. With the downtown project, we've done, it's been ongoing.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it's just one step at a time, you can't just say, yeah, we're gonna do this, and then, you know, it's.
How is overall sentiment though, like, you know, to something like that?
We, we, we have definitely. Negotiating the move. However, as far as the property down there goes, it's not anything to do with. Final Haven Water District, once we made that change, you know, belong to the town, then, then it'll be up to the town.
Yeah.
To have a, you know, talk about it and then figure out, have to have the community step in and say, this is what we would like to see done with, I mean.
Right.
It's not gonna, it's not anything you can do like in a month. It's. Zandy, I've talked about this, this.
Yeah.
When the water district, uh, when the um main, the water line, the main water line is being replaced. Might be a good idea to at least make sure that there's adequate um water and sewer lines going in that direction, or a hub, or whatever it's called.
I'm certain that we've all very much aware of what needs to be put in place.
But who knows what's gonna happen there.
It's all. All in the engineer.
Anything else?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You have done a lot of research, Alan.
Yes, thank you.
It's not ending. Just, just trying to, you know, create some more housing.
Yep, yes.
There may be some other options too, but but not, not with the building like that, we have to, the, the housing committee is. Trying to form a five oh one C three so they can raise money. But that's a really big undertaking, I'm not sure the committee really understands how big that undertaking is. And do we really need another nonprofit raising money in the community and then trying to figure out how to create housing? Who's gonna own it, who's gonna manage it, who's gonna repair it, I mean, that's why I really like the Penquist model. They deal with all that.
Right.
And they have experience dealing with it.
I mean, we'll, and they have grant writers on staff, and they have, I mean, they're.
That's part of their business model.
Right, yeah.
Been getting great.
That's why we're so anxious and eager about this, because any other thing, it's gonna be. Really difficult, if not impossible.
Right, I mean. We'll try to move as fast as we can, but it, unfortunately, these things take time. Because even if we, even if we got the water district to sign it over next week. We'd have to come up in town meeting, public forum, for everyone to come and give their. Two cents on what they think we should do with the property, and then maybe it doesn't get voted to be housing, and then.
But that would be good to know.
No, it would be good to know, I'm not saying we wouldn't do it, I'm just saying it's. Unfortunately, it's not gonna go as fast as we want it to go.
But it would be great to know, I mean, if the community doesn't want housing there and the other people have other ideas, and.
Yeah.
Then that would be good, because then the housing committee could just shift gears, like, okay, this is dead.
Right.
Let's, let's move on, otherwise, we don't really know what to do.
No, no, I agree, so.
Yeah, we've been doing so well, moving ahead and keeping everybody, you know, engaged.
Yep.
Sort of hate to, hate to come to the standstill.
Well, we probably should have some kind of town discussion about what is gonna happen with that land, pretty soon.
Yeah, we should do that anyway.
I mean, like, I mean, we know for the next. Two years, it's gonna be used for work site for the downtown project, but after that.
Right. I wonder if some of that grant funding that is available now, if you can't start for two more years, is that still gonna be available to you, or?
My, the impression I got was as long as they have the right, the legal right and your, the town approval.
Yep.
They, it doesn't matter, he didn't say it doesn't matter, but he, that didn't seem to be an issue.
Okay.
Because he, because we, I asked Jason straight out, you know, he had this leaseback arrangement and took two years, because. The downtown project's probably gonna take two years, he said, that's not an issue, we could be doing engineering, we could be doing studying. You know, we can be doing design, we could be meeting with the community, trying to figure out all the, all the moving parts, I mean, the, the truck that has to go through the back. To get to the grocery store, I mean, all that has to be back to do it too.
Right.
And he's aware of that.
Yep.
It's just a question of having the right to apply for the funding.
Right, okay. All right, well, it's something we need to put near the top of our to do this for this calendar year and next fiscal year, I would say, right, getting that squared away.
Well, it's very nice of you, thank you, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Let's move on to eight, old business cemetery mowing RFP, possible action item accepted.
So there's a bid.
There is no bid? Oh, well, that was fast, no, wow.
I was.
I saw that, I saw that on the agenda and wondered.
Friday night, Saturday morning, I just anticipated that there might be something, but.
This has been nothing.
Well, that's too bad.
Even on the sick twelve month, they're sick in the updated version that we had, um, man.
Somebody just complained to me about.
Well, they're gonna have to.
They're, they're still on the contract.
Till June.
Till June.
Thirty. Right, so we'll have it through this month and next month, but then after that, everyone's got to get used to the tall grass and the cemeteries.
And everywhere else.
Meanwhile. The only other option is to have the town crew do it and not do anything else.
Right, which is not ideal.
It's not.
Buy, buy equipment and try and hire someone.
Right. Yeah.
Doesn't have to be, perhaps, doesn't have to necessarily just be the existing crew, I mean, we have a budget that. For someone to do it, it's happened to be through a contract, you know, whether you can buy the equipment and find someone to do it, employees.
Yeah, well, if we don't get any bids, we better start looking into that, seriously.
Yeah, you're gonna have to.
How much equipment do we need to get for that? We need mowers and weed whackers.
But like, I know, but how many, that's the question. At least two pushmowers and one rider, at the very least, and we got plenty of weed whackers.
Yep.
Must hand sold them.
Uh, Peter does. And we have twenty-four whoppers, in case anybody needs a whopper. Okay, nice, good to know.
Is that still out there for anyone to bid on, or? It wasn't till three o'clock today. Well.
Must have put it back out there.
Put it back out there.
Hadn't talked to David, he doesn't have any interest in doing it again.
I hadn't heard, I haven't talked to him since the last bid was out. Hoping to catch him tomorrow when he came for his check, just to go over a few things currently. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We need to see if he doesn't want to apply for what the main issues are, so maybe we can correct him to get.
I thought we had, but.
Well.
Well, I thought maybe we had, but obviously.
Clearly, I don't.
Obviously not.
Or maybe he didn't see the updated bid.
I don't know.
Up there a few times on Facebook primarily. Okay. On the website. Was it in the wind? Didn't get it in the wind, okay.
So, well, this time. Please. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've gotta have somebody come up.
I mean, I do it, but.
When are you gonna do this? Over time? On the weekend?
Yeah, at night. You're too young, man, you know. They're not quite ready for that type of mow job.
They love to ride around.
Oh, they love to ride on the mower, I don't think they do a very good job of it, though. You'd have. All these different lines and, yeah. All right, let's move on to nine, a MDOT routine maintenance agreement. Possible action, I accept three year agreement.
Is this lower than we've been getting?
Uh, the first year was, they couldn't um go back and increase that particular year in retro. Um, so the three years they've laid out, um. This current year would be um certainly closer to what the math was previously, and then the twenty-four thousand for next year. Will. Level out the twenty twenty-one lower. So that leaves you time to negotiate, you know, after twenty twenty-three and review, I think it's worth reviewing costs to actually do this work.
Yeah, because out here it's gonna cost more than any place else does.
That's why I just, I don't see how it was gonna cost that amount to do what they're asking.
If that's what it costs to do it on the mainland, they should go an extra twenty percent.
Yeah. At least, but we have to track it, we have to show them, like, here's the actual process, so we've got to be able to pull all those things, and just have no point to do that exactly.
Hopefully that Millie can do that over the next year, and then.
That's on Millie's radar, do that, right, she's, she's aware of this. I mentioned it. Okay. Let's make sure we. You get through some of the, some of the stuff we don't need to do, some of it's not every year, regular stuff, sometimes it'll just to a point where you do have to use some of this stuff every year. Right. Um, you get into replacing, the part that concerns me is you're getting into the culverts and catch basin and and. Cleaning them and replacing them, and the replacing part mostly is what concerns me. Um, that's not inexpensive. Right. But we've never, it's one something you do presumably once every thirty years.
Well, we're gonna be doing all the main streets, so that's probably a good chunk of the ones that are on state roads, right?
I saw them, but, well, there's not really, catch basins are all through there, but we're also contributing six hundred and seven thousand dollars to that project. Right, that's beyond routine maintenance.
No, but I'm just saying, like. For those ones, we shouldn't have to worry about those ones.
Those ones should be good.
That's all I'm saying, is like, that, that little stretch of one mile out of. What is it, five point nine to six point nine? Five point seven, so the other four point seven is all we gotta worry about for the next thirty years. I mean, what, what can we, I mean, we have to.
I think it's on this one, I think it just put on notice that it's worth. Uh, we need to track it.
Cost.
To, to present a different, if it's costing us more to present that to them before. Um, the contract comes out.
So who, who signs it, you or Donald?
Oh, it has it does, um, he is the town manager.
Well, I make a motion that we have Andy sign this contract, but. To get it to Millie that she needs to track these costs, so we have something to go back at the state with for the next contract.
Second, all this favor. So is the next contract up after the fiscal twenty-three year or end of calendar, if it's twenty-three? So next year.
This is locked in for another year and a half.
Year from now, all right. So we need to have those costs. Tracked for the next year. Right, and we can look back on some of the old stuff, I mean, um, some of them.
Yeah, but the costs from two years ago aren't even gonna be anything close to what they are now.
Well, no, but you can compare them to what you got paid for.
True, yeah.
Might as well, yeah, you always want to compare actions to.
I was just thinking, we need to go with what this year, because we're gonna have a better idea of what costs are going with this year, because all of it probably costs twice as much as it did two years ago.
It would, yes, it's definitely cost more. So the, uh, things like roadside mowing that we do, I think, just about, I think all the state, almost all of the state road miles get roadside mowing, or something somewhere downtown, you know, that wouldn't have it, but. Um, you know, that's a, that's a fix per mile, and then there's the lodging, the state's share of the lodging cost and the transportation cost to get here. Um, the other regular one we do is the catch basin cleaning. In the street sweeping, um, we know. Catch basin cleaning is a fixed amount per catch basin, that's very easy to quantify. With the lodging, the prorated amount of lodging, so I mean, it's just matter of sitting and just breaking it out. So some of those things will be a little easier, uh, we don't really do litter patrol, there's a lot of volunteers that. Um, certainly do that, um.
We definitely do light dishing, brush cleanup, watering. Crowd rail maintenance.
Just did a whole bunch of tree trimming. Um, along the roadside, roads clearing roadside.
Most of those, I think, most of those things are things that we do do, it's just for more, like you said, the covert and the catch basin.
And then the sign installation, we won't know if we spend enough money putting signs up over here. Yeah, seriously.
What's the running rate?
Uh, line marking, marking what goes.
Fire diver, don't retrieve.
Point out where they are, we've done it before.
Put it in booth quarry.
We've got a firefighter do that before.
Yeah.
Booth quarry is deep, though, how do you find those?
I don't know, I just know that.
But still, it's, it's dark and murky down there.
I wouldn't just go in one.
All right, let's move on to. Nine B review draft annual lease agreements. Just trying to send them out, and I went to and I think changed the dates on them. Um, I don't know, I don't know if there's anything worth noting in any of them, really, the.
So those dates that. The coverage are we gonna be open, you discussed those dates, I assume.
They're in the. Assuming all goes well this spring, um, yeah, October fifteen to December fifteen, and then April fifteen to June fifteen.
So is it open right now or not? Okay.
Almost month.
All the signs, there was a sign, I thought that said it was open, and then it was missing, and then the other signs cut still covered with tar.
Yeah, I don't think the intention is to have people walk that little footpath anymore, we just, I think we need to take it right out.
Yeah.
So, wait, don't use the footpath? The, the, if you go, if you go down these Boston side, you could, um.
There's a, there used to be a path that would.
That started before the road, right?
Where he built that house now, so.
Okay, so just use the road itself, gotcha. Just wanna make sure, because I do walk over there sometimes.
I mean, everything looked good to me, I just was making sure that those dates were still.
Um, as far as the new water, I'll check.
Girl and asked for.
Do we have, um. Sheriff, we ever come back?
Uh, she's meeting with um the vet Thursday, um, all the plans are right, the vet's out Thursday, and. Use of the space, make sure there's no big conflicts, but otherwise, yes, she was amenable to the, to those changes. I gotta talk with her about um what level of internet service would be. Thinking that would be. I don't know if you want that in the town's name, my mind, it's our building, it probably should be in our name, and then have her reimburse us for the cost.
Yeah, I think that would be better.
She's not there, it's still there, um.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
So just I'll work with her on what speed she thinks she needs, I mean, the spectrum. Business class, I mean, the minimum amount they're offering, certainly more than enough for most businesses.
Yeah. No, it's the spectrum, you spectrum. Although I guess it's up to her, but it'll be in the town's name.
Me, and the, the only thing I noted in my report with the thoroughfare lease, um, it does. Point out that, you know, we're, the expectation of us is to maintain the.
Is that new?
Nope. That's been in there.
Okay. Um, yeah, but I mean, I don't see how we could put up hundred thousand dollars and making it all great if he's just gonna keep doing this, he's one year lease, I mean.
Would be nice to have a guarantee of some sort.
I mean, because we have all that Tiff money that we could use, that I'd like to see us.
Yeah.
Use some of it.
Yeah.
Since we've been putting it in an account and not doing anything with it.
I mean, it. I'm just trying to find this, where does it say?
It's just a one year lease to Georgia.
It's on the back of Earl's.
Right, but somewhere in here to say for. At all times, it needs safety and orderly condition, which we have been doing, correct?
Well, I mean.
Uh, not the, the, if you haven't seen the ramp, it's worth going and taking a look. I haven't been up there. I mean, we do what we can to patch it when chunks get removed. Well, I mean, yes, we need to keep it safe, so that people can use it safely, obviously. But I agree, we can't put a bunch of money into that.
But I agree, we can't put a bunch of money into that space unless we know we're gonna have access to it.
Big low tide, it goes out past where it was ever meant to anyway, so I mean, that's I mean, I don't know if we have to maintain it for, I mean, we can say this is good to use at most tides, but not all tides or something, maybe we should put a sign up there.
Yeah.
We can't be responsible for having it go halfway out in the thoroughfare when there's a huge tide because there is a point where it gets down there pretty low and it's past where they built it to begin with, and I mean, we can't be expected to maintain it past that.
Right.
Wouldn't it leave the king's land anywhere?
Hmm?
Below the king's land? That's still a thing?
I didn't know what you said.
Below the king's land?
Now, the Supreme Court may just ruled that you own everything from the low tide mark up now.
Oh, okay.
They changed that?
Just, they just changed it because the people down east were fighting about taking seaweed off their land and they went to the Supreme Court and they just ruled a couple of weeks ago in Supreme Court that so you could technically stop someone from walking on your.
Your mud flats.
Yeah, I bet that.
I don't, I I don't know if they're gonna challenge it after, I guess after that and go to the actual Supreme Court, wouldn't it, if it's already been to the.
The state.
U S Supreme Court, I mean, main Supreme Court. And technically George owns all that. That's out of the water, it'll die.
Yeah.
That we lease from him, so.
So after.
Well, yeah, we should maybe have Millie go up there someday with the town crew and see if there's anything they can do to patch the ramp, but I mean, I'm sure it's gonna get a lot of use from now till September or whatever.
Sorry, I was, the ramp, I was thinking of the actual float.
I was, I was thinking of the.
The actual boat.
The boat log, sorry, maybe I should clarify.
No, no.
The ramp's fine at low tide, it's just really steep, like any anyone would expect, it's fine, but I'm talking about the launch.
The boat.
And gangway ramp there, that that getting here.
Yeah, we just need to maybe put a few, a little bit of patch on there at some time if we could, just to make it a little bit better, but we can't go spending the kind of money that we could spend on it without some kind of guarantee from him or his trust or where where whatever it's in, I don't know, is it in a trust?
Yeah, well, not yet, it's it's still him, right, but I thought it was just him.
I thought there was some kind of trust.
I guess we'll clarify when it's time to sign the lease, I'll double check on that.
But you and.
At this point, my understanding is George is still the decider on that.
But you and the North Haven Town Manager approached him last year about something longer than one year, correct? Right, and he still was not, he didn't want.
Well, I, I mean. We'll have to go ahead and sign, sign these leases, right? I don't, I didn't see anything wrong with any of them.
Well, it's just a draft of them, so.
Okay.
Yeah, send them up, send them up, tell all the other parties, all the parties and make sure there's no.
And if not, they can sign them, send them back and.
When when we do touch base with George, bring it up again.
Did you mention that we have that TIF money that we could use last time?
I mentioned there was grant funds we could certainly go after.
Well, we could use that to match it to the TIF fund, right?
We need to be voted on and approved and.
I mean, that whole area up there really needs to be repaved and I mean, it's all in pretty hard shape, the whole.
Yeah. Even the parking lot itself.
Whole driving structure, I mean, we put in new ramps and floats and stuff, that's in better shape than the actual road part of it, so.
Right.
That would be the part that if we had a, say if we had a twenty year lease, you know, agreement, we could go and fix it.
Well, if we get a forty year lease, then we're the owners, so.
Yeah, I think.
It's not gonna happen.
I'm going to, yeah.
Or even a ten year lease.
I'm not gonna make my comments in a public place, but just know that it's a direct correlation to something else. And what the, what defines ownership? Be very careful how you describe it.
Yeah.
Next year.
Arm boys inside.
Alright. Losing everything.
Uh, next is a surplus.
Alright, that's this right here, correct?
Yeah, it was unsolicited, but we did get a bid for the wood chipper and we talked about it about a year, not a year ago, about selling it off as a surplus, because we don't use it.
Right.
Not suitable for our, for us as public employees to have. Well, yours are.
There's no interaction then. I don't think it got scanned.
We're gonna find out. Uh, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, oh, I will be accept the bid.
I mean, how much is it worth?
One year. Depends if it's running or not, I mean.
How much would it be?
I did.
Brand new, I think that's like a twenty to thirty thousand dollars. It's a nineteen ninety something.
Oh, it's that old?
It's ancient and we haven't, we haven't touched it in years.
Yeah, we paid to have it re, you know, fixed and get it earned again probably three years.
It would cost us a lot more to get rid of it. Some other way, I will be accept the bid.
Let's probably look at it too to see.
That's true, yeah, I mean, as is. If they're right, if he.
That's where we advertise it, right, as is.
We didn't advertise it.
We didn't advertise it.
Oh, we didn't at all.
It was solicited, it kind of came in the other day.
I take the money and run.
We talked about it about a year ago and it was never, we never formalized.
Yes.
Hey, that's right, we can use that money and donate to the, oh, there we go. Alright, um, I second that motion. All those in favor?
Thank you, thank you very much.
You made Eric happy.
Yeah. Yeah, for once, I'm happy at this table.
Just once.
Yeah. Took nine years, but.
Another bid, everything, equipment.
Well, I'm also.
Uh, that's true.
Right there at the back of that one.
Yeah.
I'm capable at one point.
I, I took it, I took it apart.
Saving on money or something?
I did.
I save it on paper?
Well, I think most of them don't end up kept anyways, I think I did a double sided.
Um.
That's fine.
Move on to Ted, report of town manager.
Um, I had typed it up and didn't put it in the report apparently, but I think most of it.
All as many reports as he's typed up over the years, you probably want to be able to find it fairly quick. Doesn't take long to create a folder of a drive either. Right click.
Oh, I guess, yeah, so the only other thing that we hadn't touched on um was the broadband. He was, my last talk to that person from Consolidated, um, we're gonna circle back. Probably worth knowing if if the board wants to go forward with some sort of research on an RFP to put out there for some sort of fiber to the premise solution still um with a provider, so the idea would be to put in, you know, draft an RFP the anticipation that the town will put something forward um and work with a provider um to put together a matching fund towards some grants that are out there to make it happen. I don't want to, I must spend too much time doing it if the board's not open to trying that again.
I would say I'd be really hesitant about putting forward taxpayer dollars to subsidize a private company's venture unless they're interested in giving us some pretty big guarantees on rates or, you know. You know, it's not ethical, it's not, that's not the right word for it, it's not appropriate, I don't think, for government to act in that way.
I mean, what are they doing with other community, you know?
This, or funding it separately and building their own fiber to the premise.
But are they offering like any kind of rate lock ins or?
Not that I've seen, you guys do one out, it should be.
Um, they're going with uh Acxiom.
Hmm.
Um, but um.
But the town is.
Are you talking about a connect me grant?
Oh, yeah, state or federal one, but yeah, I think there's a lot of the connect me monies.
Well, when we did that um long time ago, it was just a collaboration between the town and it was then Verizon, I think. And you applied for those grants, but the grants went to uh Verizon and they just, they expanded the uh internet connectivity in certain areas in town. Um, and I don't remember what the town contribution or matching was, if if any. It was, it was a matter of applying for the grant, but you do it in coordination with for instance, a consolidated communications.
Right. What's happening now is, I just wasn't sure if should be doing, a lot of towns are doing something and and typically what they're seeing is towns are putting something in, the providers, if they're partnering with a provider, are putting something in to leverage grant funds and so it's not nearly the amount that was being discussed before, which was a municipal owned and operated system.
Right.
Which was everything upfront.
Should be, yeah, should be voted to borrow up to nine hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
For a town owned system.
For a town system.
And they would work with Acxiom as the ISP to deliver it.
They got an eight hundred thousand dollar um connect me. So their model is a little bit different, but yeah, they're gonna spend a huge amount of money.
Well, Alzabro spent
lots of money. It was before there was all this grant.
They're still spending money, right, because they're they're maintaining it.
Hmm.
But they have locked.
Usually they, they also build their customers.
Right.
Yeah.
But they have locked in rates too.
They set the rate, the board or I guess the board, but uh however they structured that, I mean, it started at least with the select board, so either the select board or another entity they created.
Right.
Set the rates.
But they have more fixed rates for their customers than.
Right, because they have a lot of skin in the game, so they charge like a certain amount per month for everyone and then.
But taxes. I mean. I know we could partner with them and put up some money, it'll be less than what we were proposing last time.
But and it would be a town owned thing.
They're still gonna own it, they're still gonna raise rates whenever they feel like it.
Yeah, most towns, you know, if they're doing this type of partnership this way where there's no, the town's not owning the infrastructure and the town's not having control over, like in Long Island, for example, we looked at there.
Yeah.
Not that long, about a year ago. Um, you know, and in that contract that they had provided, shared as a draft that we could look at. Um, and I think it was at Brooks Main, maybe it was another one, there was no negotiating what the price would be for the customers, it was the benefit to the residents and the household on the island was you're gonna have fiber to the premise connection. Um, you know, we'll, we'll determine what the rates are, our services are. You know, I think in those cases that it was proposed at first for Long Island that they would own and then lease the backbone like a twenty year period.
Right.
And that, what they proposed was that the internet provider, the partner, partnering company was gonna guarantee the payments for that backbone loan, but they're just putting the, assessing that fee to the customers, I mean, but they're guaranteed to pay it.
Right.
Um, so either way, the the residents or the households are still paying it.
Right.
It's just whether it's through the taxes or through the surcharge on the bill.
Yeah, but if that was the way that we did it, it wouldn't go, it would just go to the people that were hooked into it, it wouldn't go to every taxpayer, right? If you could do it like that, it might have, might have made a difference because a lot of people like, I don't want to pay for this.
Because I can get spectrum already or right.
Yeah, where there's, where there's only one wired provider, it 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 works, if you're in a community where there's more than one, then it's, you get to choose which one you want to be on and.
Not always, though.
Well, when you have access to it.
I, I, I only get one. I mean, I guess.
I guess we'll probably look into it a little bit more to see, is it, are they talking a town match of fifty thousand dollars or are they talking a town match of five hundred thousand dollars? I mean, that's gonna make quite a difference.
Because that's still gonna be taxpayer dollars.
Right, but I mean, fifty thousand versus five million is quite a big difference.
Well, I understand that, but I doubt it's gonna be fifty thousand dollars.
No, I'm just saying we should just look into it, I mean, maybe it is five hundred thousand dollars.
But it what type type of lift is it for you, Marjorie, to do? What this exercise?
Well, it depends how good the draft RFPs are that are provided.
So we have to provide an RFP or they're gonna draft one?
We'd have to draft it, whether there's models and ones that we could use to set as a template.
I imagine right now there must be dozens of templates.
You know, and then it's a matter of the town putting it out there for companies to respond to, if you think it's worth doing.
I would say, you know, yeah, go ahead and book, you know, I'm, I also have no experience, you know, you you should know better than me, I hope, but uh, you know, there should be dozens of templates available now, you know. A lot of communities in the area obviously pursued this over the past couple of years.
But now we have someone that wants to work with us, this is different than what we brought to town last summer.
Yeah.
In my mind, we were proposing a town owned thing that was gonna cost a lot, I think we should at least look into this and bring it to people, we would. I mean, if there's a lot of grant money out there, which there is, I think if it comes down the line that, oh, you guys missed out on this much money, I mean, we might be kicking ourselves, so we should at least do a little bit of work.
It was a, it was a consideration before, it just isn't ultimately what was presented to the taxpayers as the solution that the committee was um believing that, you know, we wanted to pursue, I mean, this this type of model was looked at in that study. It was just um you know, not to the point you're making, you don't have control over the pricing, you're still not owning it entirely, there's still a lot of strings attached to, no, and less control.
You're subsidizing a private company.
And the price that was provided to the committee, I think was in the ballpark of like three point two or or closer to, closer to three million dollars and and it was presented as like three point five million as a community owned, so you know, entirely community owned system, so I think when you're looking at that and have have the control and the ability to to say what it is and to have someone else telling you what it's gonna be uh, without any saying it.
Because even if we.
The other option.
If if we go through this partnership, they're not gonna just turn around and hook everyone up on the island, they're just gonna hook up people who sign up for it.
That would, well, so it depends on the grant and where the money's coming from, so some of those are gonna be dictated by who's served and unserved and underserved. And when the map he showed me, most recent data, everyone out here was under, at least underserved, some were unserved, at least I believe if I saw it right, everyone was underserved, and so that's part of an analysis that the 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 whoever's responding would be looking at in in providing.
Well, you said they changed the numbers in the last year too, right? For what is served and underserved, so make it look. I mean, I don't think that Consolidated now could serve the numbers, Spectrum might be able to. You know, out of town, especially where it's.
Out of town is Spectrum, where does Spectrum end, like?
No, I'm saying Consolidated's numbers would be.
Oh.
Well, they look at the island in total, like what what the houses have access to just by hit from anyone. Um, yeah, I don't know that anyone from Consolidated would be considered served.
They would not.
Uh, but that, also that maps would look at other providers that people have access to, and so there might be certain streets or places that might not be eligible for the grant funds. Um, which you definitely, then with the, through the RFP, you know, whoever's selected and choose to include or not include them. If you're only looking for grant funds to offset it or mostly offset it.
Uh, we should just, I think we should look in a little bit more, not set up another task force, but.
No, I agree because all those grants are available.
And there's someone that's willing to work with us now, we should at least consider their offer, I think.
I guess it was interesting, the data he was showing that was available that the grants are based on um, in measuring speeds and certain unserved, the map he had that they were looking at showed all of Lionel Haven at least underserved. Again, parts unsure, so until that app changes, you know, the town would sit really well for grant funding. You know, once that's updated, if a provider was able to come in and offer at or more than those speeds that are minimums, um, you know, when those get refreshed, you know, those those areas wouldn't be grant funded. That's what was intriguing, I guess, to me, it was like, right now, it's like, oh, okay. There's a chance, I don't know how often that gets, he didn't know either, like how soon that would be updated potentially.
But that's just with Consolidated.
No, they're looking at any service available to households out there.
So the underserved, the map is, was just in general, it was a one company, I see.
I don't think he wants this company compared to me.
So.
Yeah, go, yeah, fun, start judging RFP, I said. And oil, it might not be you, but yeah. Your successor, your successor.
Yeah, just at least tell them we're interested, don't, don't not return Consolidated's phone calls, I guess, is where we should leave it.
Yeah.
Do a, do a cursory, we can do it.
I have confidence that drafting an RFP won't be a terribly tenuous task.
As long as it was a good, a good, you know, place to start from.
For those minimum speeds of. And, alright.
Like you don't wanna go there.
I'm not even gonna get to it. Um. Is that it, from you?
Yep.
Reporter members.
I can't think of anything, it's come up in the last.
I do, but I can't say it.
I, I, I'm moving going to executive session.
I, I, I will be going to executive session.
Hold on, I have to, do have to say one thing, any of this is your last meeting, I wanna thank you for all the work you've done, you've done an excellent job. Can't believe you're leaving us, how dare you? No, congratulations, uh, you will be missed, you've done an excellent job, thank you.
Well, thanks for being such a good board to work with, it's been fun and exciting and certainly, uh, bittersweet, you know, to think about going, but thank you for all the support you've given.
Only sell round trip tickets on this one.
Alright, go ahead, Eric.
Uh, I will be going to executive session, pursuing to one of my, I say, second, four or five, second, six, I can see, discuss the acquisition of real property or economic development.
Second.
Alright, I have to use the, thanks, my.
The restroom? Thank you.